Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of Adjustment. My name is David Stinson and I'll be chairing today's Scarborough Committee of Adjustment hearing. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Ossnaishnabi, the Chipewa, and the Hudnaishoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, including the Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Williams Treaty, signed with multiple Mississaugas and Chipewa bands. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearings may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting via compatible electronic device and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted upon entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is called. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating via WebEx are not allowed to use the share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for the decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appealed updates by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act, generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item listed to order on the agenda. Making submissions. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and the committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in this application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. When individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will be taken into committee for a decision. Since we are coming back for lunch, Deputy Treasurer, is there... Actually, I've got to ask the question now. Is there any declarations of interest by the panel or staff present today?
Through you, see none from staff?
And none for the Committee of Adjustment. Do we have any deferral requests, deputies?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have a deferral request for this afternoon. It is a deferral request from staff due to improper notification by the applicant. This is with respect to item number twenty-four, municipal address of one sixty-seven Brycemore Road, file number A zero two-nine-seven slash two-four S.C. We do have a registered speaker to this item, which I believe they are here in person, and we have the agent online.
Thank you, deputy. And I will note for the record that although it's a deferral request, there is one registered speaker, nine letters of objection, and there are conditions of approval from urban forestry and community planning variance number three. So you say that the agent applicant is online?
Yes, through the chair. So we can start with the agent to have them speak to their deferral.
Hello?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, fellow committee members. My name is Shane Edwards from Hughes Design Studio at one A Conestoga Drive, Unit three oh one, Brampton, Ontario.
Thank you, sir. Have you heard that we're asking for a deferral because of an issue with notification?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We're actually also in agreement with the deferral and would like to take the time to work with staff to revise our proposal. We would like to ask if we could defer to the next available hearing.
I don't think that's a problem, so we'll do our best. You know how scheduling can be. So we're going to go into committee now, so sit tight.
Thank you.
Is the speaker present online?
Through the chair. The speaker was listed to attend in person from one seventy-one Brycemore Road. Are you in the audience? If so, you can come up to the podium, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you give us your full name and your address, please?
My name is Barbara Walker. I live at one seventy-one Brycemore Road.
So the question before you is, we'd like to put this to a future date, defer it. The applicant, their agent, is in agreement with that. You can only speak to that issue. Do you agree with the deferral or not?
I am comfortable with the deferral. Just, can you give me an estimation on how far in advance it would be scheduled?
I could look at the Deputy Treasurer, but I think I know the answer sometime in the future. It is the wheels of government, so it will happen hopefully sooner than later, but I couldn't give you a precise date.
It could be up to six months or so?
Through the chair, to the speaker, it depends on when the applicant comes back with a complete application. Once the application is complete, then we will schedule it for the next available date.
Okay, so it's dependent on the changes that they decide to make?
Correct.
All right. I'm fine with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time to attend. Okay, we'll move on. And having heard what we've heard at his committee, we're going to go to committee. You're ahead of me. And we have a motion from any one of you? Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would be in support of the deferral for the applicant to have conversations with community planning and get staff the proper notification. I would also encourage the applicant, while he has this time, to please have some conversations with the neighbors. There were nine letters of objection, plus one person is here, and it would be probably a good idea to show them his changes before he comes back. So I am approv... I would approve the deferral.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Omen to defer this matter with respect to the conditions also to the application, and we have been seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor? Unanimous motion carried. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I will also note for the record that there are no files to be closed or withdrawn for this afternoon's agenda. With that, we can move to the start of the afternoon agenda with item eighteen.
Thank you, deputy. Just going to take a moment, folks. I have a little technical difficulty here. Happens to everyone. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're on item eighteen, and that is for twenty-two Hart Avenue, Toronto. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. There are... Two variances, my apologies. Okay, do we have the agent or applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, just stand by. And with respect to speakers, how many speakers are here in person on this matter? Two? Thank you very much. You can come down here and get in the queue. Get to you shortly. And how many speakers do we have online, if any?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have... We had one speaker registered online from twenty Hart Avenue. However, they no longer wish to participate.
Thank you, deputy. Agent, can you please identify yourself with your full name and your address?
Good afternoon. My name is Ushra Jahan. Address three four zero zero Danforth Avenue, Suite number five.
Thank you very much. Let me just canvass here for some direction from the committee. On the committee, is anybody interested in a presentation, a full presentation, or are we looking at questions? Okay. The committee seems well-versed with the materials you've already submitted to us. Do you wish to give us a brief overview, or will you leave us with your package and then we'll move to the speakers?
Mr. Chair, I wish to do a small brief.
Okay, proceed. You have up to five minutes. You do not have to use all that time, and you can start now.
Thank you. So this presentation is to address the proposed consent and minor variance applications being made for twenty-two Hart Avenue. The subject site is located on the west side of Hart Avenue. Our proposal is to severe the land into two equal, separate residential lots and to construct two-story detached dwellings with attached garages on each of the two new lots. In our opinion, the proposed consent and minor variances are consistent with the policy direction of the provincial policy statement. One of the PPS key objectives is to increase housing and have municipalities atmodate growth to intensification. Our proposal for addition of one new dwelling within the same property is a form of... Twenty-two Hart is designated as neighborhood in the Toronto official plan. The proposed dwellings will maintain the neighborhood's low-rise character of one-to-two story dwellings. Our submitted materials for the consent application were reviewed by Engineering and Construction Services. We fulfilled all three conditions immediately, and will also take into account their advisory comments. Utilities and municipal services are adequate and available to service the proposed new lots. In reviewing the consent application and associated variances, community planning saw no issues with either the law dimensions or the dimensions of the proposed structure. I would like to refer to few past properties which were approved by the Committee of Adjustments for the consent application to severe the lot in... severe a property in two lots, like fifty-one Brenda Crescent, thirty-nine Brenda Crescent. These were approved by Committee of Adjustment on July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four. They were approved to severe the existing lot into two parts with similar variances with what we have. These two prop... So fifty-one, thirty-nine Brenda Crescent is only hundred and ten meter from twenty-two Hart, and fifty-one Brenda Crescent is also very near. It's within one sixty-meter of twenty-two Hart. Again, there is another property near to twenty-two Hart, seventy-three Flitter Drive, within the same community, and they were also approved by the Committee of Adjustments to severe the lot into two lo... into two parts on May fourth, twenty-twenty-three. So this is not a sudden or abrupt changes or proposals that we are making in this community. The changes have been going on for over decades. So our request is to accept the Committee of... sorry, the consent application and minor variance applications. For the further questions, our engineer and architect is present in person. They can answer further questions from committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that brief presentation. Committee members, does anyone have any questions for... Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. My question is, Madam Presenter has quoted few examples of the similar thing which she has applied, but let me tell her that mostly in that area is bankloads, one and a half stories, and very few two-stories. And her application, lot frontage eight point nine five and lot area three ninety-nine, they're not minor. So how do you explain that or justify that we should be looking into it?
Go ahead, agent.
Yeah, through the chair, as we... The reason for referring those properties were they are very close to twenty-two Hart. They're just right across the twenty-two... to the south of twenty-two Hart and the intersection of twenty-two Hart and Brenda Crescent. They are only hundred meter and hundred and sixty meter. They are in the same zoning, RD zone. They are in the same community, Kennedy Park community. This is why I have referred to those properties.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, we'll go to the speakers. If one of the speakers would like to take the podium, then please give us your full name and address.
My name is Catherine Gutanos. I reside at twenty-four Hart Avenue, Scarborough, and I'm the owner of the property as well.
Okay, you have five minutes. You don't have to use it all, but make it work for you. Okay, go ahead.
I feel I will. I... My family moved to Hart Avenue in nineteen ninety-two. We left East York to get away from the overcrowded neighborhood and lack of parking. My... I lived with my parents at twenty-six Hart Avenue, which is two doors down from twenty-two, and since two thousand and three, I've been living at twenty-four Hart adjacent to this property. I... I object to the severance and all the variances as they are not minor. The increased frontage, the building height, the extension to the back, the deck, two meters above the ground are not acceptable. The streetscape of our area is defined by our broad lots, long driveways, open spaces, and oh, you're just giving a visual harmony of openness that is central to our neighborhood's identity. Hart Avenue alone, and it's only two blocks, is home to sixteen one-point-five home... one-point-five-story homes, which twenty-two Hart was. Five back splits, which flank myself at twenty-six Hart and at twenty Hart Avenue, and eleven two-story homes, sixty bungalows, sixty bungalows on that street. And it's similar around Anclita, Brenda. And although I can't say, you know, for what's been accepted already as precedence on those streets, Hart Avenue, I don't think there's been a lot severance since over twenty-five years ago, which was number seventy-two, which was a seventy-nine-by-one-eighty-three-foot lot. So it's still just under a forty-foot. The sunlight and privacy issue, I'm just north of twenty-two Hart in the bungalow. I have a lot of big windows, basement windows, side door. With the extension of the home will completely block all the sunlight to my home. I get sunrise and sunset as the way you would see if you were to look at the aerial view of what the house looked like before there. Even though there was a large spruce tree in the front, it's still allowing light all day and sunset in the back. The two-meter-high deck and extension to the back also creates privacy concerns, as we have an in-ground swimming pool. When we put this pool in twenty-fifteen, we didn't even put a wooden fence in between us and twenty-two Hart. The previous owner, Mr. Volk, had such a beautiful backyard. This, when you look at the aerial view online, the lot was heavily treed, mass amounts of greenscape, which would absorb a lot of water. We just went with the chain-link fence because it was such a nice backdrop. It does... Our backyard doesn't even look like you're even in the city. You wouldn't even... You wouldn't even think it. The lack of trees and green space, now that these two proposed homes, two long skinny homes, now they're going to be less than thirty feet wide. Majority of the properties are forty-five-foot minimum on this street. And with all the bungalows that are there, I'd probably say about ninety-five percent of them have a driveway that separates the house next to them, all the way down the side of the house, which creates such light and spacing. You don't feel overcrowded. We're just... I'm just deeply disturbed that twelve mature trees were also destroyed in August on this property for this... for this project. Again, such a beautiful backdrop, and especially when the city wants to keep green space. The application, as you can see, are two very long homes. They're going to take up a lot of green space. Again, lack of stormwater will be absorbed, will force it down into the street. My property is a little bit, as you pass my house and go... you end up going downhill, so my concern is water coming down onto my property and also to, in the back corner where lot number two is proposed, there's also pooling. When there's rapid, in the last couple of years now with the rapid or torrential rainfalls that we've had, there's a lot of pooling that's happening back there, too. So something that they may want to look into. I also have an old foundation, so I'm worried about any impact that this construction. The home mobile now built three feet from our property line. Before, it used to be... the original structure was at six feet. And considering that these two six-bedroom homes will attract more than likely student rentals, six bedrooms in twenty-six hundred square feet for two homes, there's going to be a door that's going to be facing into my driveway. I'm concerned about safety, people coming in and out all the time. Again, because we already have at twenty-three Hart a student rental that has five-car parking, six cars already filled the lot, or sorry, five cars already filled the lot where there's already spillage over. So these two homes will have potentially up to eight occupants, and will only have a lot for maybe one and a half. I don't even think it's... you can get two full cars unless they're two small cars in the front parking pads.
Good. We're kind of at your limit now. Are you done? Or do you...
Oh, I... I could go on, but if I could just add one...
Add one more thing.
One more thing. At this point, that the applicant has owned this home since February seventh, two thousand and two... or sorry, two thousand and twenty-two, there's been not one single bit of communication. I know in your application, it says to best to reach out to the neighbors. There was no consultation whatsoever and probably wasn't going to because of the arson that happened five days before he took possession.
Okay, thank you. We have some questions, Ms. Could you just... one second?
Sure.
Do you have... Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. My question to the Madam is, have you seen the variances? There are seven variances in front of us. You have touched on various subjects, the grading and water and so forth and so on, which is not our jurisdiction. There are only seven variances that we are considering. What are your chief two concerns, ma'am?
The height?
Out of these seven variances, which two variances concern you most?
The whole frontage coming up and also to extending out in the back, the lot, the whole lot size, and the fact that two homes are being built.
Okay, we will ask this question to the agent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time.
Thank you for showing up and taking the time to share. Sir, are you... are you with... are you going to speak, too? Okay. Just full name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Jim Gutanos. I live at twenty-six Hart Avenue. My main concern with this property is just the way it went about. From the beginning, I'll give you a little background, which gives to the reasoning for the variances and stuff like that. When this property sold a week before closing, there was an arson investigation because the house conveniently caught fire a week before, so I had to provide security footage to Toronto Police for an arson investigation. And then we found out that there was a builder involved, and we figured, you know, I'm making accusations, but from there, the house sat dormant. Grass was not cut. Nobody came until the city was called to force the owner to cut the grass. And then finally, this was the first house on the block, one-half story, wrapped in asbestos tile. And because of the structural deficiency, I guess Toronto buildings gave them permission without demo permit to tear it down. No abatement was done. I ended up calling Ministry of Labor, come in for the actual workers that were there, breathing all the asbestos that was blowing in the air, blew all into other people's backyards, and not a care was given. And then... And then later on, the following year after that, actually, the garage was torn down, was not part of the fire. So Toronto, uh, Buildings has actually put a order to comply or register on title, which confuses me how he's applying for a variance here, which the grounds were torn down without a permit, demo permit. Because it was not part of the, the property. So that's, you should be aware from that before you go to grant, uh, this person, uh, his variances. And then from there, I have an issue with the length of the house because with the variance for the lengths, several trees were cut down, which would be where the variance would, the house would extend. So because he, we call him Forest Street, Forest Street did not give any permits for these houses. So but there was no complaint. We assumed you had a, a permit to tear because one of the trees in the front looks like it was partially burnt, but the rest where these houses extend for your variance would be in their tree protection zone, you wouldn't be able to have the variance approved or even apply for the building permit. And then from there on, you know, same reason, we see student rentals across the street regarding overcrowding parking the street, which the snowplow can't get by, causes people, because there's no sidewalks there. So people have to walk in and then causes so much, there's already so much traffic and people are walking around cars just to get the, through, um, through the, through the property there in the front. Um, and another thing is when this, when this variance was, uh, I guess, all the letters went out and stuff like that. Someone showed up to put the, the notice. Wasn't even placed up properly height so people can see it. It's placed down beside a hydro pole, just twist tide and it was blowing in the wind like no one could even read it. For neighbors to understand what was going on on the property. Basically, overall, this property has been neglected and just shady the way everything's gone. If this was just built, a regular, normal house, I wouldn't have any issues with it, but just the way it went about from the day one before it was taken possession with the fire and everything else and the trees cut down without a permit, by the way. You know, these variants shouldn't be allowed.
Thank you, sir. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, you are correct. There's seven variances on the off, offset. Uh, when I started this, I said there were two. My apologies. Also, uh, we also have with our package, we have standard consent conditions. We also have the engineering and construction uh, conditions and urban forestry. I wanted to mention that. There were three letters of objection, so just for the record. Now, turning to the committee, does anyone have any questions for the speaker? How many, uh, trees do you think were cut down without permits?
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve. The one, there was only one in the front from the fire.
Two.
There were one or two that made a spruce that looked like it was sad. It was still alive, but I would think it'd be dead, but that was right in the front and then another one in the front. So in the back, there was more trees back there where your, where the property, this house where you want to have the variance for would be basically going right through the tree. So you wouldn't be able to build it unless you cut it down, which you eventually did without a permit.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, oh, we have a question from Ms. Holman.
Of the twelve trees, do you know, um, the diameters of how many would exceed eight centimeters?
Oh, they were, they were full-size grown trees. They're all.
So every single one of them?
Yeah.
No, no, not all of them.
Not all of them? So how many would you say would be exceeding?
One, two, three, four, five, possibly six.
Okay, thank you.
Especially where the variance was, there was two large, the trees right there, right where you want to extend it. There were very large ones there that were healthy.
Okay, we're gonna give, thank you very much, sir. We're gonna give the applicant agent an opportunity to respond. He, they, they have that opportunity. Would you like to respond?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, to answer those questions, uh, engineer and architect are in person. They have registered.
Okay, so come on down to the front, please, who would like to speak to this issue. And we'll go through the formal process here. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. Please give your designation, your full name and your address.
Okay, uh, thank you. My name is Mohammed Ali Hussain. I'm a professional engineer. I'm engineer. Uh, so, uh, also, I'm the agent, one of the agent of this application. Okay, uh, I'll try to give you answer some of the questions that raised my neighbor. Uh, you know, the, right now, there is no house. The house is, uh, the house has been burned, including the tree. So that's why owner cut, demolished the house based on city recommendation. City inspector enforce them owner. So there is a safety issue for the neighbors and pedestrian. That's why. Uh, owner got several, uh, later from the city. The house has to be demolished, including the burned tree. But I don't know the, how many tree he cut with the house. Now there is no house. Now we need to build the house. We can build multiple as per city guideline. We can build the four place house over there without comment of adjustment. Instead of that, instead of that, we propose the two single-family house. Maintain the, uh, I think severance is also, is, is a, uh, issue or variance, but rest of the variance is very minor. I can give you example, the height of the house. Uh, we propose the height of the house is eight-point-four-five meter. The allowable height is seven meter. And backyard setback is, uh, backyard deck height, uh, two meter, but we can reduce, we can reduce one-point-four meter. That it's adjustable. Uh, others, all the setback, front side back, all the setback, we comply already. So there is no issue, the setback. There is no issue with the drainage system because we follow the grading system or grading plan. There, there will be, no water will run from this land, twenty-two bar, Hart Avenue to twenty-four Hart Avenue. There is no issue. Also, the building length or depth of the building is less than the twenty-two Hart Avenue. So uh, during the demolition, uh, and issue, I can guarantee there will be no impact in the neighbor house. So in addition, window size, we'll follow the building code. And green space, definitely we'll maintain the green space as per building code. In addition, if we need to install the more tree, plant the more tree, we'll install the tree. We'll, we'll plant the tree as much as possible. So I hope I covered, I gave you all the questions, uh, answer. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, for that brief presentation. Um, couple of clarifications. When did you and your firm get involved with this project? What, what year?
Yeah, it's almost, uh, more than six months after, after demolition the house after.
So I, I don't know that. So just tell me, when, when, what month, what year did you get involved?
Around six month.
Six months ago?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, as far as the, um, the engineering standpoint goes, if I understand you correctly, you're staking your professional reputation that there's not going to be, to your view, water issues and other issues impacting the, the homes around these two homes being constructed.
I, I, I can give you guarantee, there will be no impact, neighbor house.
Yeah, be careful with guarantees.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I've had trouble before with those.
No, no, no.
Okay. Um, long story short, but your professional view is that this is a safe build?
Definitely.
Okay. Uh, was there any, uh, water surveys done or any water work done to, with respect to drainage? I didn't see it in the package, but I wanted to check in.
Yeah, and, and not yet, not yet.
Not yet. Interesting. Okay, I'm gonna pause right there. Uh, turn to committee and we'll see if anybody else has any questions.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I believe that as part of the building process, you have to provide a grading plan. Is that correct? For the water runoff?
Yeah, should be. Yeah, yeah.
A, a, so.
I'll do it.
Okay. Um, I thought I heard you mention something, something about reducing something by one-point-four. Are you reducing a variance? That's my first question. The second question is, uh, number six, the height. It's only point-six-four meters. Why can't you comply with the height?
Height, you know, the building height is total nine meter, but wall height is, uh, building.
Or I'm sorry, the building length, sorry, building length. Why can't you comply with the building length? You're only asking for point-six-four.
Who is number?
Six.
Six, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, building length is seven, seventeen meter. Yeah, it's, I, I propose seventeen-point-six-four meter. If, if, uh, committee request, then we can reduce the point-six-four meter. Yeah.
So my question is, you would be able to comply, so you would be able?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
That variance?
Yes.
Is that what you were talking about earlier? Because I, I thought I heard you mention something about.
Oh, no, I, I, I mentioned the deck, deck height. Deck height is now two meter, so we'll reduce the deck height because only, only the, uh, variance issue for the neighbor. If deck is higher deck height, uh, maybe there's some private issue, privacy issue of the neighbor. Otherwise.
Okay, but the same with the height. It's, you're only asking for point-five-eight. Can you comply with the nine-meter height? And remove that variance?
Actually, you know, the, there is a technical issue. Uh, as, you know, that there is a room, there is a room above the garas, then living room, then top of the minimum height, living room, seven, then the, the second floor height. So there's a technical issue to reduce this, uh, total height.
So that one you need.
Yeah, that, that one I need. Yeah, yeah.
But you can deal with, uh, the length. You can remove that variance then or?
Yeah, I can reduce the length. I can reduce the length seventeen-point-six-four to seventeen meter. Then I can reduce the deck height of, of two meter to one-point-two meter.
Okay, so, okay, so variance number six, would you be removing it then?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then what else did you say with, with, what other variance? What are you doing?
Uh, this variance is last, uh, last on seven also.
Okay, so what would you be doing with number seven, sorry?
Yes, seven's, uh, deck height will be one-point-two meter instead of two meter.
I'm confused. The two-point-five changes to one-point-two?
And through the chair to the applicant, would it still project three-point-zero-five meters from the rear main wall? So you have your variance on the screen, sir. You can look at variance number seven. So you're proposing to, to state or to amend the proposed rear deck is one-point-two meters above ground and projects three-point-zero-five meters from the rear main wall? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay, and through the chair to the applicant, will any of your other variances change as a result of the length elimination of the length variance, like your lot coverage? Are there any other variances that would change?
So if I reduce the length of the building, lot cover is automatically reduced.
Pardon me?
If I reduce the length of the building, lot cover is automatically reduced. But how much? I don't know. I need to calculate.
Okay, through the chair, we would need those numbers.
Thank you, deputy. And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this juncture, I'm, I'm a little hesitant, um, on this file. I, I'm concerned about some things that are shifting in front of me. Not in a nefarious way, but just in a best practice and a, do I understand what's going on here? And I have a job to do, and that's to make a decision based on what I'm hearing. And I'm not hearing what I need to hear to make that decision. So, um, at this juncture, deputy, I'm wondering if perhaps, um, we should go into committee and, and, and actually, I should maybe canvass this gentleman or the owner and see if we're willing to go for a deferral. So that's what I think we're gonna do, sir. We're gonna ask for a deferral. And I want you to know that I appreciate what you're doing and trying to do, but I am not understanding what's happening here. And I got to tell you, that's not gonna happen with me. I'm not gonna make a decision and pretend. So is the applicant, uh, on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I, I'm thinking about a deferral. How do you feel about that?
So, Miss, uh, the engineer, Ali Hussain, uh, is my supervisor.
We are okay. We are okay. We are okay for defer.
Yeah, yeah.
We are okay for defer.
To the heart of the issue of why I'm very confused. So we are now going to, I'm going to make this declaration. I think this committee should go into committee. And we should put forth a motion to defer and, um, subject to anybody giving me a different look. Uh, that's what we're gonna do. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Holman.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think that, um, because of the applicant's willingness to make some, um, changes here and so that everybody can be clear, I, I would also strongly encourage you, sir, to have a conversation with the neighbors when you make the changes because it is probably gonna change some more variances before,
Sure.
before you come back. So with that in mind, I would move deferral of this application.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Howe?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I will second this, uh, motion. Although I would like to comment, I, I think if, since you're willing to reduce the, uh, the height of the deck and variant seven to one-point-two meters, I would strongly encourage you to, uh, just take out this variance altogether like the next time you come over, because three-point-five meter in length compared to two-point-five is nothing. And I, and I, and I uh, think you should comply with the bylaw as much as possible.
Thank you.
Um, we have a motion by Ms. Holman to defer. We have it seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That's been passed. Thank you.
Mister, uh, Mr. Chairman, you may wish to speak to the residents and inform them that when this application comes back, they will also be notified.
Thanks, Ms. McCauley. So for the information of all present, uh, when this matter is going to return to the Committee of Adjustment, you will be notified. Thank you. So we're gonna move to item, pardon me, nineteen. So this is for thirty-three Reed Mount Avenue, Toronto. And it's a consent requested to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. We have conditions of approval, the standard consent conditions, uh, Metrolinks and urban forestry. I'm noting no letters of objection or speakers. Do we have the agent applicant available?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent here in person and there are no registered speakers to this item.
Come on down, Mr. Agent. Please state your full name and your address.
Uh, good afternoon. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Brandon Stevens. I'm a partner with Johnston-Litowski Planning Consultants. Um, and our address is two thirty-five Lake Shore Road East, Suite two oh two in Oakville.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, in light of no speakers online or in the audience, let me canvas committee. Would anyone like a presentation or does anybody have any questions? Okay. There is no presentation being requested. You're, you're fully appraised that you can do one. But the package you submitted seems very comprehensive and we go through it before we come here. Um, would you be okay with us going into committee with this?
Uh, absolutely. I defer to you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just ask, um, if there's any concerns, I would like to, to give my presentation. Um, if there's no concerns, um, from committee, I'm more than happy not to.
Okay, we're gonna go first to Ms. McCauley and then Ms. Holman.
I have no concerns. Uh, I don't need a presentation. I have a question. And the question is dealing with Metrolinks. Uh, does this property back on to the Metrolinks? Does this property back on to the Metrolinks rail right away? And have you have you then seen what Metrolinks are requesting?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, yes, it does back, to answer your question, it does back on to the Metrolinks rail corridor. More specifically, it backs on to the Agent Court Go Station itself, is immediately behind the property, and we have seen the conditions, the standard conditions for Metrolinks.
Okay, and I assume you're okay with the conditions?
We are.
Okay, all right, that's my total questions.
Ms. Omen, thank you. And you are aware, treasurer, of course, of the conditions from the the urban forestry?
We are, yes.
And you're good with them?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're gonna take this matter into committee now. Would anybody like to start us off, Ms. McCauley?
Okay, we have a consent application and variance applications to create two new lots with a number of variances for frontage, lot area, building height, and building length. It's in a part of old Agent Court that is changing and will change as your report said, sir, with the new revisions. We have comments from Metrolinks and from urban forestry. I recommend approval of this application, subject to confirmation with or consultation with Metrolinks and with urban forestry.
Thank you for that, do we have, go ahead, Mr. Howe?
Um, I will second the the motion. I do wanna commend the applicant for submitting a comparison chart on page twelve to fourteen. It makes my life a lot easier in terms of making a decision, so I appreciate that. And I believe there is also standard consent conditions being added, so I would just add those conditions as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howe, and you are correct, there's standard consent conditions, there's also the Metrolinks, and of course, urban forestry. So we have a motion by Ms. McCauley to approve with those conditions, and we have it seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor? Unanimous, we move forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we're at item number twenty, which is twenty-two Westcroft Drive, Toronto. Consent requested to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. Do we have the agent or applicant present?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Leo Mastandrea from eight one seven Cosburn Avenue, and I'm the agent for the owner of that twenty-two Westcroft.
Okay, sir, just hold on a second, I I realize we have five letters of consent, but I just wanna ask, do we have any speakers on the line?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you, and this particular file, we have standard consent conditions, community planning, engineering and construction, and urban forestry, and as I said, five letters of support. Sir, you have up to five minutes, I'm just gonna canvass the committee now to see how they feel about a presentation. Does anyone on committee need a presentation? No? Okay, sir, the committee needs no presentation, and they don't have.
If I may add.
No, just let me finish, and then you can add, sir.
Initially, we had a issue with the driveway width. Hello?
Can you turn him off for a minute? Thank you. Sir, you're gonna have to wait until I finish talking, and then I'm gonna listen to you, and so will everybody here. Okay, so as I was saying, the committee does not need a presentation, you're invited to make one if you feel it's necessary, but we don't have any questions. Your package was quite comprehensive, and I wanted you to know that. Do you, did you hear what I said?
Um, you're cutting in and out, but I just wanna add if we addressed the engineering and development concern and the planning concern with the revision of the width of the driveway, which we reduced, so we no longer have a variance. So I I don't feel it's necessary to tie us to the comments from engineering or planning in regards to the tying us to the draw, to the site plan.
Through the chair, we don't have any correspondence from those divisions, from community planning or engineering, clearing their conditions or rescinding their conditions. So I would recommend imposing the conditions that you have before you for this application.
So, sir, you you're entitled to that view, but the information from the deputy treasurer is, we're not waiving those conditions.
Okay.
Just just ask, is that the correct site plan then, dated December second, twenty twenty-four, or are you saying there's another one?
Sir, what site plan are you referring to?
No, that is the correct one, which we revised the driveway. If you look at the engineering concern was the width of the driveway.
Okay.
Um, and we have, we have removed that variance.
Okay, that's fine, there is no variance for parking, but I'm just, so there's no harm in attaching the planning condition, all they're doing is tying you to site plan. So if that's the correct site plan, December second, twenty twenty-four, then.
Fair enough.
Yeah, okay.
So we have another question, yeah, we have another question from Mr. Khan, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. Uh, I would like to know, you have a lot area seven twenty-nine point three zero meter square. What is the maximum they are asking? You didn't mention. Hello? You understand my point?
Hello?
Yes.
No, sorry, can you explain?
Uh, sir, I will.
We have a maximum.
Uh, that's right. What what is the comparable area, lot area? That is what I would like to appreciate to know. You are asking seven twenty-nine point three zero meter square. That is your requirement. What is the allowable?
We don't have a variance for the lot area, we have a variance for the frontage.
A frontage, I know.
We only have variance for the frontage, and I have an air, I show, I submitted a lot study.
I know about.
For area frontage?
Sir, I know your frontage that you are asking twenty, twelve point two zero, as against allowable is thirteen point five. I know that, but you are not telling me the lot area. Why? Because my question is.
The lot area doesn't have a, we comply with the lot area.
Okay, then how do you?
We have no, there's no variance, we comply.
Okay, sir, then my next question is, that it is allowable zero point four times lot area, but you don't know the lot area, how do you calculate all this?
No, the lot area is seven hundred and fourteen, based on the consent notice.
No, no, no. You are not there what I'm asking.
If you go to the, if you click on item twenty, it's got the conveyances, and in there, it tells you for part one, it has a lot area of seven twenty-nine point three, and part two, it's seven fourteen point one square meter, so is that?
Madam, this this is what he's asking, fine, I know that, but I have to compare what is the requirement of the zoning bylaws.
So you, so they comply, because there's no variance, I I don't know, maybe, Madam, Deputy Secretary.
Because then he's calculating point zero four lot area, when he doesn't know the lot area, how can he come up?
Through the chair, if staff can pull up the minor variance list. So through the chair, it seems that they comply with the lot area, and perhaps the agent can speak to, his site stats may provide what the permitted lot area is and the proposed. Through the chair to the agent, do you have the required lot area? We have your site stats on the screen.
The required lot area is five hundred and fifty-seven square meters.
How much?
Five hundred and fifty-seven.
Five hundred and fifty-seven square meters.
Five eighty-seven.
Five fifty-seven.
Five fifty-seven.
No.
And his area is seven twenty-nine and seven fourteen.
You're correct.
Thank you.
To the applicant, don't confuse us.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse anyone.
I think Ms. Omen and myself are just, and I'm not sure about my colleagues to the left here or Mr. Howe, but Deputy Treasurer, could you, in a sense, drill down into the the technical numbers that he's suggesting and that Mr. Khan is asking for? Because I am still not understanding how that's adding up.
So through the chair, why don't we start with the agent and the public hearing notices? So staff will bring up the public hearing notices on the screen, let's just confirm through the agent, the public hearing notices that went out to the public, are you revising any of these variances?
No, there's two variances, and we're not revising anything.
Okay, and through the chair to member Khan, do you want to relay your your concern, your ask your question to the agent?
I did, ma'am, ask him about the lot area, which is defined in the zoning bylaws, how much it is, and that is a simple question, simple answer. If he has, fine, if he doesn't have, he has to tell us.
So through the chair, so the agent indicated what the required lot area is, it's also on the plans on the screen. Through the chair to the agent, you don't have a variance for lot area, you're complying, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Treasurer, that's the game right there, that's what we were trying to source down, so thank you for that clarification, and thank you to the agent, thank you, Mr. Khan. At this point, does anyone have any other questions for the agent? Oh, Ms. McCauley, please.
Well, I hate to say it, but this is a compliment to the agent. I read his report, and I want to quote from it. Ironically, both similarity and differences, appropriate lot area and frontage as variations in dimensions and sizes of lots found in the city's historic neighborhoods, which have evolved over many decades, are considered to be a significant character, defining attribute of these unique areas, and that differentiate them from the uniformity of more modern developments. He is next door, the new lot is next door to Saint Margaret's in the Pines Cemetery, which I believe was built in eighteen-something or other, and the houses in the area were built obviously afterwards, but it it is an area of the city with a wide variety of housing, changes over, uh, but I thought it was interesting that he pointed out to us that this wide variety of housing sizes and styles is part of the old character of West Hill Community. So, sorry, I didn't want to get into lot area.
That's that's fine, thank you for that. I think unless we're.
I'm prepared to recommend approval of both the variances.
Well, okay, let's go into committee then, so please, after you, we're in committee.
Okay, and no other comments, questions? You're okay? Okay. I recommend approval of the consent and two variances for twenty-two Westcroft Drive, they are appropriate, the variances are really very minor. One point three meters in terms of frontage, and there is, community planning have asked that be built in accordance with the site plan, I think the applicant has said that is satisfactory, there is the standard engineering conditions and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley, do we have someone to second that motion? Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, so Ms. McCauley has moved to approve this application, Mr. Khan has seconded it. It is in regards to the conditions of approval, contain the standard consent conditions, community planning, engineering and construction, and urban forestry. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion's carried, thank you. Thank you, sir. We're going to move to item twenty-one now. Two fifty-three Markham Road and twelve twenty-thirty Dunham Street, Toronto. Consent requested to sever the property into two lots and create reciprocal easements. And there is many moving parts to this application. Do we have the applicant or his agent here, or their agent here today?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, my name is Matthew Schuman, I'm a lawyer at McCarthy-Tetra, we are solicitors to the owner and applicant. My address is sixty-six Wellington Street West, Suite fifty-three hundred in Toronto. With me today and also registered is an owner's representative, Mr. Jeffrey McGrath.
Wonderful, thank you, sir, just a pause, I don't see it on our package, but I'll just ask, no speakers today?
Through the chair, no registered speakers for this item.
Okay. You can speak for five minutes, sir, I will like to canvass, and I will right now, the the team here. Would you folks like a presentation, or does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
I'm just gonna speak very fast. I read your report, as I understand it, you want to to create part six for your first of your apartment buildings, and all the rest of it is easements over the remainder of the site. So we're creating one parcel to build the first of the apartment complex, we have a number of easements over the site, they have gone through official plan and zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw, I assume, I was looking for the wording, but I'm used to the wording that the provisions of the zoning bylaw will apply to all the properties in the heavy black line, notwithstanding their division into separate parcels, and therefore, we don't have to worry about any zoning bylaw, just give you approval for the consent. Correct? You're nodding.
Ye- yes, through you, Mr. Chair, and and to the members of the committee, that that is accurate, as you can see on the our plan that staff has up before you, part six is where the first building on this site will go, the remainder of the R-plan parts one, two, three, four, five, and seven are the remainder of the site, which will be built out subsequently, and the long list of easements there are reciprocal, so because this is contemplated of a shared underground garage, so part six will have access for utilities, the rest of the site will have access over part six for utilities, vehicles, pedestrian access, any shared amenity space, and so on. And yes, our our site-specific amendment to the citywide bylaw number nine eight eight twenty twenty-two includes a provision in, it is section five of that bylaw, that says despite any severance, partition, or division of the lands, as shown within a heavy black line in diagram two, the provisions of this. the provisions of this bylaw and the citywide bylaw shall apply to the whole of the lands as one lot, as if no severance partition or division occurred.
Thank you, sir, we have another question, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sir, through you. My question is, I understand this application, that there are four buildings and they are from eight-story high to twenty-story high. Seven hundred eighty-three units, townhouses, E and F. Now, all these things, and I also read this is under site control. Could you explain what is under control?
Yes, so you, you have accurately described this. The approved and zone development is for six buildings of varying heights and they have gone through an official plan amendment and rezoning. They are currently going through the city's site plan control process under section one fourteen of the City of Toronto Act. That relates to access grading, green roof standards, the city's green building standards, among other things. So they are still going through an approval process at the city, but not related to the lots or the zoning per se.
There's also mentioned below grade parking. And is part of that as well?
Yes, sir, so there are parking standards already in the site-specific amendment to the zoning. We're not asking to change those. Specific design and compliance will be shown on the site plan drawings and obviously will be on the building permit drawings as well.
And the public park too?
Yes, any visitor parking, this is all going to be a residential site. But yes, there will be residential and visitor parking included in these buildings. Oh, I'm sorry, you said the public park. Yes, there is proposed to be a one-acre park on this site.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, nice recovery. I think at this point, it's very clear that this is a very large and extensive project. It does not have a lot of conditions before us because of, as Ms. McCauley said, it has the site plan control that will be ongoing. Unless anyone else has any questions, I'm going to take us into committee, how do we feel? And we're going into committee, sir, thank you for your presentation, go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I thought the presentation material was really great. There are no changes proposed to the build form, the density, number of units. So this is basically easements to make everything work. So I have no issues with this, so I would move approval of this, including the standard consent conditions.
Thank you, and Mr. Khan, please.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Omen has moved to approve this application with the recommendations of standard conditions only, no objections and site plan control. And seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor? Unanimous, motion carried, thank you, sir. Item number twenty-two, six Shiva Court, Toronto. To construct a new two-story garden suite at the rear of the existing one-story detached dwelling. Is the agent or applicant here? He's here, come on down, please, we'll get you in the queue. We have a speaker, is the speaker present or online?
Through the chair, there is one registered speaker online.
Thank you. We have a recommendation by community planning for refusal. We have conditions of approval by MetroLinks. We have three letters of objection. We have a late material councillor's letter and as stated, we have one speaker. We'll start with the, are you the applicant?
Applicant is here, I'm the agent.
Sorry, say that again, sir?
I'm agent. I'm the presenter, I'm designer.
And he's the owner?
He's the owner and the...
Perfect, my apologies, I have a bit of a hearing issue.
Thank you.
You can speak to up to five minutes.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna canvass the committee for a moment.
Mr. Chairman, could we just have the agent give us his thoughts on the deferral request from planning? Before we go any further?
Yeah, so can you just give us your thoughts, sir, on deferring this matter? Because that's what community planning is asking us to do.
Yeah.
Actually, they want refusal, so we're asking if maybe we could defer that. What do you think about that?
Okay, defer, no problem, we can do it.
Deferral?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go into committee and we're gonna defer this matter. And thank you for coming out today, but I think there's some more discussions you're gonna have with the city. See if you can come to an agreement.
Okay, thank you so much, sir.
One second, we'll go to committee.
And through the chair, we do have a speaker.
Oh geez, I forgot about our speaker, sorry. Yes, let's hear from our speaker and then I'll explain the instructions.
Michael Smith, you've been unmuted.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, state your full name and your address and then I'm gonna give you some very specific instructions.
Okay, Michael Smith, I live at eight Shiva Court.
Thank you, sir. We are only dealing with deferring this. Do you agree with deferral or you don't agree? What is, what say you?
Yes, yes.
This will come back again to committee if it proceeds and you will be notified, but we're gonna put it over to a future date, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. Okay, committee, let's take it into committee. Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
If somebody else wants to move, that's fine. I just wanna make a comment that, to the agents, the agent and the owner, I mean, planning is extremely clear in their position on this, about the size and that it doesn't fit in with the policies. So I'm assuming you're gonna go and work with planning to try to make it either work or not work before you come back here. And then I would also ask that if you make revisions and you do have to come back, unless you build as of right, that you please speak to the neighbors so that, you know, they know what's going on and perhaps you won't have any opposition if you come back. So with that, I would move deferral of this application, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Omen, Mr. Khan?
Seconded.
And seconded by Mr. Khan. So we have, Mrs. Omen has made a motion to defer this matter, Mr., with the conditions of MetroLinks and of course, the community planning refusal. And Mr. Khan has seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Through the chair, it's come to our attention that the agent for item twenty-three, who's also the owner, is not online yet. So I recommend that we stand this item down. So again, item number twenty-three regarding twenty-two Burnley Avenue. The owner agent is not available here either in person or online, so we will... Okay, so through the chair, it appears we do have, oh, you're the architect?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's a different name, okay. So through the chair, they are here, we can proceed with item twenty-three.
Okay, just, gentlemen, come on down again. And just give me one second to back up here, thanks Deputy Treasurer. I've been made aware of a good question. Deputy Treasurer, do we have two speakers registered for this or just one?
Through the chair, we have two registered speakers. And we're just checking if they are online. So we have one registered speaker online, the other one is not here.
Thank you so much. One second, folks. So this is item twenty-three. And it's twenty-two Burnley Avenue, Toronto. And it's to construct a rear and side yard addition to the existing dwelling with a secondary unit. And this is a note that this is a revised public hearing notice is being issued to correct the variance number eight. And there are on the document I'm looking at, ten variances. What is your full name and address, sir, and your status?
Good afternoon, my name is Moinul Islam, thirty-five North Uldubul over Discovery. So we are here already, we presented with the variance, so... And we got three recommended, we got recommendation from the planning department on three variances, five, six and seven. And we already sent them to, with, aligned with the recommendation. Now, now we are removing these three variants, the five, number five, number six and number seven. I think that it might be not going, went through with the committee, but we actually provided to the planning department. So our requested, our request is to be all other variances to look on, for to go for approval and, but we think that it's minor in nature, at least, at least on other, other seven variances. So, yeah, if there is any caution, we can help with the caution.
Thank you, sir. I will note in our package that there's urban forestry conditions of approval and that this is an amended application to delete variances five, six and seven.
Yes.
The recommendations from community planning.
Yep.
So, did I hear you correctly? You're agreeing to delete the variances five, six and seven?
Yes.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, I have my hearing and I apologize.
Through the chair to the agent, could we also please look at variance number nine? If staff can scroll to variance number nine. So the way variance number nine is stated is the minimum required landscaping, but there's no reference to front or rear. Is this front yard landscaping, this requirement?
It's for the... I don't know, it's for the, it's for the rear yard or front yard?
We'll just have to clarify this variance to add in where this landscaping is. Is it front, is it rear?
I, I, I'm not sure, but I would say it's far front. But I'm still not sure. I have to look, I have to look on the drawings, so.
Okay, through the chair to the agent, so are you amending variance number nine then to add in the word front yard landscaping? The minimum required front yard landscaping is fifty-four point four six meters at fifty percent and the proposed front yard landscaping is fifty-two point two six meter square and forty-eight percent?
Yes.
Okay, so this is amended application.
Thank you Deputy Treasurer, keen eye. Did we still have a speaker outstanding? Okay, does anybody have any questions for this gentleman before we go to this? No, okay, sir, we may get back to you, we're just gonna take this, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're just trying to get ahold of the person online here, folks.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can, sir, I'm just gonna ask you to state your full name and your position in this and your address.
Yes, my name is Harry Vavrutos. The address, I'm, I'm here on behalf of my mother who lives next door at twenty Burnley Avenue. It's the adjacent property, so I'm here representing her.
Okay, sir, you can speak for up to five minutes, you don't have to. I guess you wanna share some things with the committee, please go ahead and your mother.
Yes, thank you very much. As I mentioned, I'm here, my mom's been living at this address since nineteen seventy. We're the immediate bungalow to the south of the property. I grew up here along with my two sisters and my parents. You know, my sisters now live with my mother, my widowed mother and failing health. The properties are joint, you know, through a driveway, along, a shared driveway. And, you know, the, the, the variances that are being requested here, I'm a bit surprised to be honest with you, because I did speak with the applicant who told me that he was going to remove item number eight variance and I'm hearing the opposite of that from, from the applicant's agent. You know, I did reach out to the applicant and I did speak with, with the applicant and indicated the variances that I was concerned about or we were concerned about. So I'd like to just quickly outline which variances I'm concerned about. Variants two and three request both variances of maximal main wall height and there's a variance of point two six meters and that's almost about a foot. And when you add that together with the variance of the length of the wall, which is going from the permitted seventeen meters to eighteen point six four, that's a six-foot further length on the wall. So, so those two combined, you know, along with, you know, the minimum setback on the south side of three feet is concerning to us. And we request that these be amended and or refused. Variance eight is, is, is I consider not a minor variance. The bylaw requires that a new exterior walkout stairs be a minimum setback of point six meters or two feet from the lot line. The applicant is requesting to reduce this to point one five or six inches from the lot line. This is a major variance and unacceptable as this staircase is called a walkout, but realistically, it is the entrance to a secondary unit that will be directly abutting our property line. You know, in order for them to, to complete this walkout, they have to do foundational footings and work that will, you know, will require, including plumbing and drainage, that will be literally next to the lot line. And on top of that, when days like last week where you had, you know, eight to ten or fifteen inches of snow or fifteen centimeters of snow, where's all that snow and where's the, all that gonna go? And down the road, if he decides to enclose that, that walk, that staircase because, with a vestibule because of the weather conditions, you know, does that meet the required setbacks? So those are, that, that, that variance number eight is a very big issue for us. And he had originally told me that he was going to remove it, but that's not what I'm hearing today. hearing today. The last variance that is on the agenda that I have concerns with is, is the number 10, which is the parking space that's permitted in, you know, indicated that there's no permitted parking on the front lawn or side lawn. In this case, they're requesting that, and that's because they've already, they've already done that. They've already put in a parking pad, and so they're requesting it to be permitted. The driveway is over 27 meters long. We both have long driveways, they're both single, but they're abutting each other, and there's plenty of room for parking for, you know, him, who has himself, or anyone else on the property that, you know, doesn't require, you know, parking on the lawn, and it sets a bad precedent going forward if this is permitted in this neighborhood. The one thing that's on there that hasn't been discussed is the maximum lot coverage. And we're reviewing the site plan, I noticed that the site plan, the zoning permits 33 percent lot coverage, however, the application shows a maximum coverage of 40.52. I'm kinda, trying to understand why that was, was allowed, or it's not considered a variance in this application. And the last piece that I'd like to, to bring up is, I also expressed this, is they have three large windows on the south elevation showing on the massing. Those are six by four windows, one in the basement, one on the main floor, one in the second level. Those three windows overlook our property, and they look directly into the dining room, bathroom, and basement windows. And they're, you know, they're elevated, so they, you know, at least the second, the first floor and the second floor are. These are very large buildings, so I'm concerned about privacy. I'm also concerned that there are trees that are there currently, which we haven't received, I guess you haven't received from forestry, the trees, the cedar bushes, which act like the privacy, that also will be, will likely be taken down because of this large development that's right next to the front. So these are the, the items that I, on behalf of my mother and my sisters and I, are requesting refusal, and I'm willing to amend. I thought the staff had requested a deferral because they hadn't received all the information, but I'm not hearing that today. So I, I would be open to a deferral to allow time for us to finish these discussions because they're ongoing.
Thank you, sir. Quick question. Did I hear you say about the entrance just being off the property line a certain distance?
One more time, because I didn't hear everything. I, like you, have hearing problems.
No, empathetic. Did you say that with respect to an entrance, it is just inches off the property line?
Variance number eight requests that the walkout be the minimum setback instead of two feet be .15 meters, which my understanding by calculation is, is just under half an inch, or about half an inch, or half a foot, sorry, my, my bad.
Yeah, and you got it before I got to it, so well done. Yeah, it is half a foot, it isn't specifically an inch or two, but nonetheless, we won't split hairs. Just for the record again, can you confirm your, your first and last name?
My first name is Harry, my last name is Vavruzos. My mother's name is Helen Vavruzos.
Thank you. I, I think Ms.
She's the owner.
Thank you, sir. I think Ms. Omen has a question.
Hi, Mr. Vavruzos. You mentioned a parking pad was poured. I'm kinda looking at the plan here, it's, where exactly is this parking pad that you say they poured?
It, it, it's, it's not concrete, it's not poured, I, I, I don't know if I, if I said poured, I didn't, I thought what I meant.
Maybe I just.
It's interlocked, it's interlocked.
Okay, where is it?
And it's, and again, it's, it's on the front of the property. It takes up about half the, half the yard space in the front, and that's probably also why they're looking for a variance in the landscape coverage in the front.
So just so I understand, because I'm looking.
That has already been done.
Yeah, I'm looking at the site plan, so it's in front of the existing house?
It's in front of the existing house, in front of the stairs that go to the front door, and into the yard.
So it, so is it fair to say it veers slightly, like you would pull in the driveway, and then it veers slightly, it veers to the right, and there's a car parking in front of the stairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. So, I mean, you know, we have other concerns of, you know, multiple units in the, there's already existing three units, there's, in, in the existing bungalow. And based on the plans, as I see them, he is looking to build two more units, because there'll be one unit that'll be ground floor, second floor, and a separate one for the basement. So those two, plus the existing three in, in, in the bungalow, that's five. He's closing off all access of the windows from the bungalow to the new addition. The new addition, by the way, is much larger than even the bungalow. So, but I asked the question around the, the lot, the lot coverage, it's 40.5, and why that's not a variance. I'm wondering if someone can address that for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to ask the applicant, I guess.
Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir, my, I don't have a question, but I have information for the applicant. He was talking about variance number 10, front parking space. It has been approved by the transport services, so if they have no objection, how can we take into consideration?
Yeah. I wasn't aware of that, so if that's the case, then how's, why is it on the variance list if the transport has already approved it?
So, thank you, sir, and thank you, Mr. Khan. So essentially, that's not a condition of concern, but it is, it is noted as one of the variances, so point taken. Does anybody on committee have any questions or comments at this point? Oh, Ms. McCauley, go ahead.
This isn't a comment to the speaker, but actually a comment, sorry. This isn't a comment to the speaker, but a comment to staff. It arises from what the speaker has said. I'm looking at the site statistics here, and I don't know whether this has gone through a zoning approval or not, or whether this is just a waiver. But he's clearly said he has, with his addition, his coverage is 40.52 percent. Very unusual that we get over 40 percent, and he's not asking for a variance.
Through the chair, so this was submitted on a zoning review, this was done by building staff. However, should you feel that a variance is missed, you're welcome to move for a deferral for the applicant to clarify the variances with the buildings department. If there is a questionable number, as you've identified with the lot frontage, and we can also pose that question to the applicant to address why they are not including a lot fronted, or sorry, a lot area, lot coverage variance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley, thank you, deputy. I think this is a great and interesting point, maybe we should have the, the applicant speak to it. And, and please come on down, sir, and we're just going to look at Ms. Omen and let her ask a question first before we get to that first part.
Hi, welcome back. So I, I have a question about this parking spot, because when I'm looking at the site plan, you show a parking spot that's kind of beside the house and straight in front of the proposed addition. The speaker says that there's an interlock parking pad that's in front of the existing house, facing that entryway, which in my opinion then would reduce the landscaping in the front even further. So can you speak to that? Because I, it's not on here. So is that there?
Yeah, one, one second, sir. Staff, could you pull up the site photo of this? There's some photos to this issue as you talk, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Mahmoud Ali Hussain. I'm again, I'm a professional engineer, so I'm one of the agent. So, variance number eight, I can discuss. Already my owner, the house owner, already discussed with the neighbor. Joe, we'll take care of this issue. We'll remove the variance number eight. We'll shift the entry, steer the basement entry to fit from the sideline land property. Variance number eight. And the land cover is, yeah, it was there. First review, we got the land cover is variance from the zoning review, but some area, you know, the some area city increased the zoning coverage last few months. So that's why this zoning coverage is within the limit. That's why they removed the variance. Land cover is, sorry, yeah. So land cover is within the limit. I have the old zoning bylaw report notice, so it was number one variance. So when the limit increase, the city zoning examiner, they remove this variance. So, and my neighbor objection was that another one, number eight, also, I agree with, I'll comply the number eight variance.
So are you deleting variance number eight?
Yeah, I'll delete, I'll confirm the two feet, two feet setback from the left side.
Okay, so, so just for the record, then, you're, so variance five, six, seven.
Seven, eight, right.
Deleted.
Deleted, right.
And through the chair, number nine is amended to add in the word "front yard landscaping" to variance number nine.
And we still have to also address Ms. McCauley's point.
Okay, to the applicant, I've pulled up your information that you provided here. And in zoning information, now I'm looking at that, I, I noticed that there's two things. You have maximum coverage allowed is 33 percent, but what you're providing is 40.52 percent, but you're not asking for a variance.
No.
The second thing is the maximum FSI, again, according to your information, is 60 percent. What you're providing is 62.06 percent. But again, in both coverage and FSI, we don't have any variances. Have those numbers changed from when you submitted your drawings?
No, we did not change the drawing. So last month, we got the message from the city, they increased the lot cover is this area. So that's why there is no variance for, due to, for the lot covers. But floor space index and lot covers, we did not change anything. I have all notice, I can, I can share with you.
Well, it's, it's, if you're satisfied, sir.
Yeah.
When you go for a building permit, it will be reviewed.
Yeah.
Probably aware, and if it is inaccurate, then you'll have to come back for another variance.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I'm, I'm surprised that we're not used to seeing variances for 62 percent FSI, or for a maximum coverage of 40.52 percent as being permitted. But it's up to you, sir. If you feel that you have had your building proposals all approved, all looked at.
Yeah, I'll check again, please.
Satisfied that the only variances that you need are the ones in front of us, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll check and I'll.
Well, your alternate is to ask for a deferral, and go back and have these numbers double checked. Now, I, I don't like deferrals either, but I don't want to approve something that, I noticed that planning staff have recommended refusal in their report.
Thank, thank you, Ms. McCauley. Sir, we've got another question from Ms.
Sorry, I just, and I, I agree with Ms. McCauley, but I, and for another reason, I want to take it back to what I said about the parking pad that's interlocked. I looked at the pictures. When you look at the pictures, you can see it goes in front of the house. When I look in your site plan, unless I'm missing something, that looks like green space. It doesn't look like it's accurately reflected on the site plan, from what I can, I mean, look at the picture, it goes way in front of the porch, like the speaker said, but on the site plan, to me, it looks like the driveway is kind of going straight, and then the rest should all be grass, so I.
No, 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 this, this left side is neighbor driveway, this shaded area is our driveway.
Yeah, the shaded area is your driveway.
Yeah, yeah, our driveway is straight.
Well, what I'm saying is it should be, it should be angled more, because you have a parking pad in front of the porch area. So for, for that reason also, I would agree with Ms. McCauley, that you may be better off to defer this, to get, you know, accurate approvals for what you're in fact wanting to do.
Okay, no problem, jokes, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. So, it, it may be better, sir, for a deferral, there's a lot of things that aren't adding up here, and it's, it's unfortunate, but when you have community planning saying refuse it, and then Ms. McCauley's catching numbers, Mrs. Omen's catching pictures that don't seem to jive with service.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so is.
Okay, no problem, a deferral is okay, we are agree.
All right, we're gonna go into committee now.
Okay.
So we're in committee. Who would like to, okay, Ms. Omen, go ahead.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I really, I respect that you had tried to work with planning, deleted variances, but I do think there's discrepancies here that need to be fixed, which is in your best interest, because they'll be caught at building permit anyways. So I would move approval and for the deferral, and I would also ask that if there's any other issues that you keep talking to neighbor during that time.
Thank you, Ms. Omen.
Thank you very much, sir.
Ms. McCauley, would you like to second the motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Ms. Omen has moved that we defer this matter with the, the conditions and recommendations that we discussed on urban forestry, community planning, and some things that this committee can't fully appreciate, and that was seconded by Ms. McCauley. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And through the chair, for the minutes, the minutes will reflect the amendments made here today by the applicant.
Thank you, deputy.
Chair, if I may, could I request a five-minute break?
So we're going, sorry, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're coming back here after a ten-minute break.
Through the chair, we have to unmute the room real quick.
Thank you, sir.
Good to go.
Item twenty-five sixty-four Glen Watford Drive, Toronto. Uh, to construct a new two-story detached dwelling, the existing one-story detached dwelling will be demolished. And there are two variances. And there's conditions with urban forestry. No objections and no speakers. Do we have the applicant or agent online?
Through the chair, yes, we have the agent and no registered speakers for this item.
Okay, um, agent, are you there?
Hi, Mr. Chair and committee members. Yes, I'm here today.
So full name and your address, and you can speak up to five minutes, but I can also canvas the panel here to see if we even need a presentation or have any questions.
Sure, my name is Nicole Para, twenty-two Blue Forest Drive, Toronto, Ontario, M three H four W two. I welcome any questions or concerns from the committee, and I'm also happy to go into committee if there's nothing that needs to be said.
Wonderful, thank you. Let me just canvas. Anyone have a request for a presentation or questions? There are none. We are going to go into committee and I will look to the committee to, okay, Mr. Khan, you can start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is straightforward application, minor. And I will move this separate application be approved with forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do I have something, Mrs. McCauley?
I will second that motion.
Mr. Khan moved to approve this application with urban forestry conditions. Ms. McCauley seconded it. Can we take a vote? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Motion carried. Thank you.
And to the chair to clarify for the record, that's urban forestry condition number two and number three.
It is, thank you. Moving to item number twenty-six. Thirty-eighty-nine Danforth Avenue. To construct a new nine-story mixed-use residential building. We have four variances. There are conditions of approval with Metro Links. There are no objections and no speakers that I see on the list. Do we have the applicant or agent with us?
Through the chair, yes, we have the agent.
Agent, please go ahead.
Mr. Rosetto, you've been unmuted. Mr. Rosetto, you are unmuted. We can see you. Oh, there, I see your video is coming on. We can see you, but we can't hear you yet. Mr. Rosetto, you are unmuted on our end. Sir, perhaps you log off and call in. Through the chair, it appears that Mr. Rosetto is going to call in.
Thank you. Would you like us to hold?
Yes, we'll pause for a moment to give the applicant time to phone in. Through the chair, it seems we're unable to connect with the agent for this application. Perhaps we stand down this item and give Mr. Rosetto a few more minutes while we hear the next item for him to sort out his audio. So we'll stand down item twenty-six and we'll move on to item twenty-seven.
Thank you, deputy. Item twenty-seven. Which is thirty-eight fifty Finch Avenue, Toronto. This is a regard to an interior alterations to expand the existing restaurant with two variances. Uh, there is a, sorry, one second. Yeah, transportation services recommendation for deferral. There is also written correspondence from a counselor. And I don't believe we have any objections or letters of support. And before me, I'm assuming you're the applicant or agent?
I'm the applicant.
You're the applicant. Okay, um, just one second. Actually, you know what? Full name and the address you're from.
Nandini Joseph, thirty-eight fifty Finch Avenue East.
Thank you very much. I turned my camera off accidentally. Well, I'm just gonna canvass the, the committee here and see if we need a presentation or have any questions. Ms. McCauley, go ahead and then Mr. Khan.
Question. Is, this is an expansion of an existing restaurant. Is the restaurant the only building, the only use of that building?
Yes, it's an extension of existing restaurant. There is only one eatery in that building.
Okay, and no other uses?
No other uses of any restaurant.
Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. I have two question to ask. Madam, this alteration and changes is within the building or outside the building expansion?
It's within the building.
No outside expansion?
No outside extension.
And how do you, I mean, I am familiar with the area because I live nearby. Parking is a very big concern at the moment. And you are saying that you are providing ninety-eight while one seventy-one parking spaces are required.
We.
You meet the challenge?
Okay, the parking number is actually one thirty-four. And top of that, we also have tri-parties agreement between three buildings. I have documents about that as well. So there is agreement with our left and the right building. And parking was never an issue in that area.
Also, transportation services is recommending for deferral of this application. Are you aware of that? Also, Transportation Services is recommending for deferral of this application. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am aware of that, and that information came to us last Thursday, and we've been waiting for this process to be completed almost over a year. And I do want to bring attention, I do want to give a little bit of presentation about why this is, why we want this to be happening.
So would you agree for deferral or what?
Putting a deferral would be a hardship on financial on us, and we've been waiting it for over a year. On top of that, we've been paying rent for a unit that we are not using it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Please proceed with a small presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and committee members and all the city staff. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Nandini Joseph. Along with my husband, Joseph, we are the co-owners of Joe's Bistro located at 3850 Finch Avenue East. We are the applicant for this request. Eleven years ago, we opened Joe's Bistro. At that time, my husband was working in finance, but his passion for food and hospitality led him to pursue his dream for creating a restaurant. His vision was simple, to prepare meals using quality ingredients that he would serve his own family. He believes that using the best ingredients is key to a creating healthy, tasty and top-quality dishes. At first, it was financially challenging for us. Joseph left his stable job to venture into unknown world of restaurant business, which put a significant strain on our marriage and family life. However, with this tireless effort, our restaurant became, began to earn a recognition and accolades, not only from our customers, but also from media outlets like Toronto Star, Global Mail, CBC Radio, and various local magazines and newspapers. We initially leased unit G8, 587 square feet, and somehow made it work despite its small size. We had a large kitchen, washroom, and a small takeout counter, but we were often forced to turn customers away due to lack of seating. I should note that we are the only eatery in that area, which makes the demand for our food even greater. When unit 10 became available, which is 690 square feet, we decided to lease it to accommodate the growth of our business. The space next door was in good condition. All we needed to do was reopen the connection between two units. As a small business owner, we want to operate within the law, which is why we required, inquired about the necessary step to expand legally. We were told we needed to upgrade our ventilation system, update our liquor sales license, reissue a new site plan for the entire property, and meet many other requirements, some of them which I don't have time to list in this short five-minute presentation. The process of applying for the Committee of Adjustment has already cost us over $50,000. I should also mention that I reached out to Ted Malkos from the City of Transportation Division, but never received a response. Then, just last Thursday, less than a week before this hearing, we received a new request for parking study and the deferral. I tried my best to comply with this new request. When I inquired about the cost of the parking study, the lowest court I received was $9,500 plus HSD, with timeline that would delay the hearing to mid to late 2025. I should point out that the parking study is not even listed in the Committee of Adjustment Application Checklist. Sorry. Moreover, parking is not an issue at 3850 Finch Avenue East. There are three properties within the plenty of parking space. All three properties have signed an agreement that allow customers to use each other parking. I can provide you a copy of a tri-party agreement. I believe the Committee of Adjustment exists as a form of small business owners like me who want to comply with cities' law and do things properly. We should have the opportunity to request a variance when needed. I've already invested a significant amount of time, money to get this minor variance approved. In conclusion, we invested tremendous amount in this process. We only seeking to expand our business in a lawful, compliant manner. I respectfully request that the Committee of Adjustment consider our application, significant costs we have already incurred. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That's a very good presentation, and in regards to what you commented on with the... Not bipartisan, but the tri-partisan agreement with other businesses, was Traffic Services made aware of that?
This is something, I received it from the landlord recently. I'm not sure whether they have... I believe they don't... We have mentioned verbally, they don't have this document.
Okay, so that'll be something to visit later. One more thing, when you add in the other businesses' parking spaces plus what you already have, what's the total parking spaces?
Over 500.
Over 500, that's a lot.
Yeah, around 500. It's too large. There's, one side is a church, has many parking.
Okay, I'm not going to occupy all the space here. I'll look to committee members for any questions, or go ahead, mister... Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. May the owner please advise these alternate parking arrangements, are they by contract?
Yes, they are in a contract.
And can you confirm if they allow you to park on their parking lot?
Yes.
You all, you know, 24/7 essentially, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. One additional question for me. So, unit G10, I'm looking at Google Map, it's current... Previously, it was a Kumon. Is that correct? Is that the...
Sorry, previously was?
Unit G10 that you're acquiring and you're building your restaurant on, what business was it previously?
It was a studio.
Oh, studio, okay. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Alman, and then Mr. Khan.
Are you open seven days a week?
Sorry, okay.
Are you open seven days a week?
Yes, we are.
So you are a destination restaurant. Is there on-street parking allowed in off-peak hours on Finch? Do you know? No? So there's never any parking allowed? Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you, Ms. Alman. Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, my question through you is, I'm coming back to the parking, I realized you are 73, spaces are short, then they require number. And Transportation Services asking two question, and one is parking study. And you said it's very expensive, $9,000 something. I can understand. And the number two, ma'am, my question is, when you have this restaurant, how many people will be? What will be the capacity of the restaurant in number of people?
Right now, we have eight seats, but we are looking to expand it up to 20.
20 people?
Yes.
With the expansion?
With the expansion, it will be 28.
So it's not very much, eh?
It is not a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm familiar with other locations on Finch Avenue, which have been challenged, shall we say, for parking, especially when they want to expand. And I think our concern is that there really isn't an alternate other than an agreement with your neighbors. So can you give us a little bit more comfort as to what is the agreement with your neighbors and for how long is it? Excuse me, sorry.
It is a permanent agreement between all three of the parties, where I have a formal contract that's been signed by all the parties.
And that's been okayed by your lawyers and theirs?
Yes, it was initially also approved by lawyers in 19... I'm looking at, 1994. Accepted on 28th day of August, 1994.
And that allows you to use their parking lot for your use?
Correct. And they could park at our parking and we could park at their parking.
Okay. And which are those three owners?
Sorry?
Which are those three? You're in the middle here. You said you've got a church next door. What's on the other side?
Yes.
There's a shopping plaza on the other side.
Correct.
And...
I'm the middle one.
Okay, who are the three?
So the left side, the grocery one, the church, and myself. So three of them have.
All right. Okay, no further questions?
And through the chair, I just want to double-check. There was a note that there was another speaker for this item, but it may be part of your team. The name Harach, is that... Okay. You're not speaking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Thank you, deputy. Okay, so we have a recommendation by Traffic Services to defer this. You don't want a deferral, but you also don't want a rejection of what you're trying to do. So, in the balance of things here, I'll look to the wisdom of this committee. I'm wondering if we should proceed with a deferral, or should we go into committee and have our discussions? So we're going to go into committee now and have a chat about this, okay?
Thank you.
Can I go ahead, or does Ann want to go?
Yeah, well, I think Ms. McCauley, we'll let her go first, and then we'll go to you, Ms. Alman.
It's... I'll be short. Basically, as I has said, I have seen other locations where they have to rely on the neighbors for parking, even overflow parking. In this case, it seems as though they have gone to the neighbors. You've got a restaurant, you've got a church on the other side. I can't imagine that they are occupied 100% of the time together. So that seems as reasonable. Yes, it would be nice to have a transportation study, a parking study. I think all they're going to tell us is that they need this number of parking spaces, so I'm not recommending that we require a parking study.
Ms. Alman?
I normally like to go with the staff recommendations. Having said that, I just don't see the logic in this, just because the bylaw says these high numbers. We're talking 28 patrons, and they want 90, and they can provide 98 spots. So even if it's full, there's still 70 free spots that are sort of allocated to them. And I think if it's busy on a Sunday from churchgoers, well, they're going to be in that parking lot already, they're just going to walk over. So I, you know, and the advisory comments frankly only speak to dimension, parking spot dimensions and driveway widths and changes, and that's not happening here at all. So I would be inclined to approve the variance that's before us.
Thank you. Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said, I live in this area, and I'm quite familiar with the building. I was the building inspector myself when it was being built. My concern is, and the concern is legitimate, is the left turn because of the church. And I have seen the study being done at that time. And taking the left turn on Finch to your restaurant will be jamming this thing. And that is my biggest concern. Otherwise, I would have really sympathized with you about the parking study, no problem. But left turn is my biggest concern, because that will be holding the people or the traffic going into your building.
There is actually connection between when you turn left on Finch...
Sorry, ma'am, I apologize. We're in committee, you can't speak to us. I'm sorry. Does anyone else have an observation or comment to make? Mr. Howe?
I may, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the... This is somewhat of a minor variance. I mean, not the variance, but the proposed use of the property, which is expanding the existing restaurant. But I do have to keep mind of the Transportation Services recommendations. And I think what would really satisfy me is if the applicant or the owner could submit your agreement, because I don't have that in front of me, and I don't think we can accept documents on the spot. So what I would suggest is, one, if you could submit your agreements for parking to the Transportation Services. Well, first of all, defer this matter and submit the agreement you have with your neighbors regarding parking, and see if that would satisfy Transportation. And also submit those agreements to this committee again, so we could have that on the record. And I'm pretty confident I can say if the parking arrangement is, as you noted, more than 500 spaces, I think I would be satisfied next time to approve. But without the actual documents on, you know, being available to us, being reviewing, I'm a bit concerned about approving this at this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Deputy Treasurer, if those documents, as Mr. Howe's outlined, are submitted to Transportation Services, when it comes back to us, would we be seeing those documents by due process?
Through the chair, yes. If the application is deferred and the applicant could then submit to the Committee of Adjustment those documents as part of their updated revised materials, and it would also go to Transportation Services.
And in the due process, it wouldn't get edited out by the time it gets to us? We would see these documents?
That is correct.
Okay, that helps me a lot for my decision. Okay. So, we have to move forward in this committee. Do we now put a motion for deferral, or do we put a motion to approve? Who would like to go forward? Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
I'm going to put forward a statement here. I'm looking at the plans. I see that on the back of their plan, their driveway is subject to a right-of-way, which seems to connect with the property next to it. I understand my colleague's request to actually look at the documents, and that seems reasonable, except that we're delaying this. And I'm not sure that I'm interested in looking at those documents. I'm more likely to take it on faith. They're the ones that are going to suffer if there isn't enough parking, not anyone else. So I don't have a problem with this. I'm not going to put forth a motion because Mr. Han has made a statement. I'd like to hear from him.
Go ahead, Mr. Howe.
Chair, perhaps we could go out of committee and ask if the applicant is agreeable to a deferral?
Let's step out of committee. Go ahead, Mr. Howe.
Applicant, would you be willing to defer this matter to the next available hearing?
I... It's going to be very hard on us. It's over a year, and like I said, it's $54,000 so far spent. If we go into deferral, the next one would be mid-April, May. Until now, I'm paying rent for a unit that I'm not using it, and...
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Chair, you know what? I think I'm satisfied with what the applicant is saying, so I have no more issues.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Howe, and thank you for your heartfelt response. Ms. McCauley, I think we'll rely on you to introduce a motion, and we'll go from there.
Okay. No other comments? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. I recommend approval of this variance application. I don't think there's any conditions whatsoever. It's a simple approval.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve this application from Ms. McCauley. No conditions. We have Ms. Alman who seconded. All those in favor? Okay, we have four in favor and one dissent. Oh, with Mr. Khan, sorry. Motion is carried. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much, Chair and committee members. You're all welcome to the restaurant. It's on me.
Okay, we got to move to the next item here. Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Alman, keeping me in line. Do we have deputy, the person we were waiting for?
Through the chair, yes. We do see that Mr. Rosetto from item 26 is on the line, so we will try again for that item.
Thank you. Are you there, sir?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, so state your full name and your address.
Yes, my name's Foster Rosetto. I'm with Land Development Collaborative, 113 Miranda Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, just give me a second here. For this application, number 26, sorry. There is conditions with metro length for, conditions of approval with metro lengths. There is no letters of objection, there's no speakers that I see. Am I accurate in that? Yeah, that's accurate. Does anybody on committee want, wish a presentation or have any questions of this agent? Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. We are dealing with item number 26, right? Thank you, ma'am. My question through you, Mr. Chair, is that previously we have approved this for seven-story, 32 units. Now we are moving, looking at nine-story mixed residential. Now my question is, how many units now you have? And how many retails?
Yeah, so I may not have heard the last part of it, but just, just so you know, we were, we were approved in March of 2023. It's actually zoned for 10 stories. And the reason it was seven stories was that the angular plane guidelines by urban design were more restrictive than they are today. We have a number of properties that we're developing along Danforth. And through our discussions with both urban design and planning, they asked us to look at the various projects that we had, because they all back onto laneways, and they all had this angular plane. And they actually encouraged us to come back and, because the guidelines had been relaxed, to come back and relook at the drawings. The only stipulation they gave us was if we did a nine-story building, they wanted to see a sunshadow study, which we provided them. And it indicated that there was no increase in shadow to the neighboring properties. And based on that, finding staff actually encouraged us to come back with the bigger building.
Sir, you are going away from my question, kindly stay what I am requesting. Sir, my question, simple question, is with nine-story that you are proposing, how many units now you have? One, and number two, how many retail shops you have?
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't hear that last part. So it went from 32 units to 39, 28 one-bedrooms, which represents 72%. Eight two-bedrooms, which represents 20%. And three bedrooms, which represents 8%. The retail space-
How many, how many units now? Sir, how many units?
Oh, 39.
Thank you.
39, sorry. And the previous retail space was 274 square meters, and it has remained the same at 274 square meters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan, thank you, sir. Does anyone else have questions for the agent? Okay. Okay, we're gonna take this into committee. I'm not seeing a huge issue with this application. I'm not seeing any issues, quite frankly. I'm glad that Mr. Khan asked the question he did, just so we know the numbers for the record. But I'm not concerned about it. Would anybody like to put forward a motion either way? Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my motion is simple, that we have four variances in front of us. And the staff has recommended as well approval of this thing with metro lengths conditions. So I move this application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Khan, we have Mr. Khan moving to approve the application. Do we have someone to second that application? Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
I'll second that application for approval.
Thank you, so moved by Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Item number 27.
I think we're at 28.
Yes, item 28, my apologies. And the address is for this, 4604 Kingston Road, Toronto. And we have to construct a new 12-story mixed-use residential building with two variances. We have conditions of approval from community planning, supplementary agenda, and of course, the ECS, which was late for conditions of approval. But ECS also has a recommendation for deferral. Do we have the agent or owner available?
Through the chair, we do have the agent on the line, and I just wanna state for the record clearly, the address for this application is 4694-249, or sorry, 4694-dash-4696 Kingston Road. And we have no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you for that, deputy, and also sorry for the wrong address. Okay, agent, are you available?
I am, sir.
Your full name and your address, please.
Sure thing, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of committee, my name is Mike Dror. I'm a planner and partner at Bowsfields, and my firm's address is 3 Church Street, Suite 200.
Okay, sir, let me canvass the committee. Does anyone wish a presentation, Ms. McCauley?
No, but I have some questions.
Okay, does anybody also, just to canvass the group, have any other questions too, just so we know? Oh, right, oh, Mr. Khan will. So Ms. McCauley then, Mr. Khan, we're gonna ask some questions, sir, are you good with that?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
Okay, it's a little bit longer question. Mr. Dryer, have you seen the letter from Transportation Engineering requesting-
Through the chair, I have seen it, yes.
You have seen it?
Yes.
And are you in a position to proceed with this engineering report that's been requested? Or do you wish to, are you in a position to proceed with this engineering report?
Through the chair, I think you mentioned before the transportation services report, but I think you're referring to the engineering report from yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I'm happy to speak to the deferral request. We are not supportive of a deferral, and I'm happy to elaborate why, sort of two kind of key reasons. And I had a bit of a sob story, but I think one of the previous applicants had a probably a much better one, so I'm not gonna bore you with that one. But what I will say is that this application has been under review since 2019. This is an application we first filed for site plan approval in 2019, and has been through a minor variance application that was refused, and then approved by the OT, and then with approval for the site plan approval, the OT as well. And then the market has changed dramatically throughout the time of the application. We've been working closely with city staff since the OT approval to get to this stage here. This caught us by surprise, this request from the engineering to defer. And I will say, yes, we acknowledge this is certainly an issue, and it's a legitimate issue. But we have actually reviewed it already, it's actually a very simple issue. It's really a matter of including the population from one nearby proposal into the sanitary capacity analysis. And this morning, WSP, which is the client's, my client's engineer, myself, and the applicant all met together. We reviewed the comments, WSP's already updated the report. That report has already gone to the engineer and the file, that was submitted to them around 10:00 or 11:00 today. And then that report also went to Committee of Adjustment staff, that was submitted to the CVA around 11:00 as well. I think it's not part of your agenda, because it was submitted today, but it is posted to the AAC already. And WSP, my client's engineer, is confident that that issue has been resolved. So in light of all that, our opinion is there is no need to defer the application, the issue has been resolved. And we would ask that the application is heard today on its merits.
Through the chair, to members, just for clarification for the record, staff would need an updated report from Engineering Review clearing these conditions. And if this report was just submitted this morning, obviously Engineering would not have time to have reviewed that report, let alone provide a report to Committee of Adjustment clearing those conditions. So I'll just remind what members have before them, is a deferral request from Engineering Review, or if approved, a very specific condition, that the applicant is to provide a revised detailed sanitary capacity analysis with model, including the updated population count of new development for the site, and that would be to the satisfaction of Engineering Review. So this would mean for the applicant that they would still need to clear this condition in order to obtain building permit and to proceed with this application. Or in the alternative, you may defer the application, and the applicant works with Engineering to provide a clearance letter to us about this condition. But either way, Engineering has identified this condition as a requirement.
Thank you, deputy.
Mr. Chair, happy to, sorry, I don't wanna interrupt.
Yeah, it sounds like to me the deputy's making clear that there's two choices, deferral or variance amendment or addition.
Or through the chair, of course, either refusal or approval.
And of course, there's always refusal. Go ahead, Mr. Agent.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the, yes, so the report from the engineer identifies a couple of issues, but also identifies the condition, as Deputy Secretary of Treasury mentioned. We would be, although we don't, we would love to not have the condition applied, we are, I've confirmed to my client, we are okay with applying that condition. And what that condition would do is it essentially requires us to do what we've already done, which is submit that report to the development engineer. That report has already been in, but we're happy to apply that condition. And then what it does is it makes the approval of the variances conditional on submitting that, and then of course, that report being reviewed and approved by ECS. So if that's the intent of the committee, we are happy to accept that condition, should the committee choose to approve the application.
Thank you, Mr. Dror, I think it's prudent at this juncture. I'm just looking to my left, and first Ms. McCauley, and then I think Mr. Khan have something to say.
Okay, Mr. Dryer, you would have looked at the previous application for this property, previous variance application. You'll note that the committee at that time refused your application. I was, I'm the only person on the committee who's still here, unfortunately, to you. But at that time, I expressed a deep concern about the project. My concern with the project was that you are proposing to build this apartment building with underground structure at the zero street line. I know this part of Scarborough. This actually is, as I said before, Highway 2A. It's the King's, I guess the King's Highway, Highway 2A. And Highway 2A, I use a lot, because I know that that's the spot, past the stoplights before your property, I can change my speed from 60 to 80 kilometers an hour. Now, that is a whole historic situation. You're proposing to build an apartment building. I have no problem with the height of the apartment building, I've looked at it, I have no problem with the location. And the committee also at that time had a concern with the parking being provided. But I no longer have a concern with the parking being provided. My concern was at that time, that because this was a King's Highway, I didn't know whether there was any services in the area, unlikely to my expectation. To build at the property line was something that I couldn't in all conscience agree to. That I was, I was concerned that whatever you did might interfere with services, or there may not be any services, you have to put the services in. So that building at the property line was an application that was very premature. For that reason, and another committee member had another issue, we refused your application. I'm going on a bit here. Your application was appealed to the OMB with the site plan, and I saw that you were the planner at the OMB. I note that you no longer are asking for zero setback for underground structures from Kingston Road. Good, it would have helped had you agreed to take that setback. You might not have had to go to the OMB. But you've gone to the OMB, and that's history. Now you're asking us to approve this application, when Engineering Services say, we're not sure how much services there are. We're not sure about capacity. And so I'm back into my old engineering problems, I don't know. This is land that hasn't been developed for high-rise, it's land that's essentially part of the King's Highway. I would ask that you ask for a deferral, bring forth that study showing that there is, or that you will be building sewers with sufficient capacity. So my recommendation is a deferral. As the Secretary of Treasury has said, whether you agree with the deferral or not, you're not going to go anywhere until such time as you have satisfied that condition. It's, it's just not possible. So my recommendation to committee is if the applicant isn't going to agree to a deferral, so that he can satisfy his servicing issues, I would recommend refusal.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. So, oh, sorry, I forgot, we have Mr. Khan, he'd like, yes, he'd like to say something, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. My question to the applicant is, very straightforward, and kindly be with me, sir, you are recommending 207 units, right?
That's correct.
As against 153 will be the parking. Now, if we stay with the first one, 207 units, and 12, I'm talking about the parking spaces, add 12 visitors parking spaces, one for commercial, the total comes to 220. Now, if we go on the other side, that 153 you are suggesting, and add 12 visitors and one commercial, it brings the total to 166. So we are 166 against 220. And that is a deficiency of 54 parking spaces short. Now, my question is that you are increasing the unit from 168 to 208, right?
From what, 207, through the chair.
So which parking spaces should I consider that you are, have in mind, that I should consider approval or refusal? Because once you will tell me, then I'll make up my mind, should we go for it or not?
So the question-
If I may ask-
You understand the question, what is the parking spaces you're asking for, sir?
Yeah, and I wonder if staff are able to pull up slide eight of the presentation that our office prepared? That might help to clarify the request. Thank you very much, and if you just scroll down to the eighth slide. So just one, one below, which is the residential parking variance, yes. So if you're able to zoom in just slightly for my old eyes, we can see on, on the left of the screen, that is the, sorry, at the top of the page, is the requirement, is the variance being sought. So the variance is that the requirement is a 207 parking spaces, resident parking spaces, as per the community zoning bylaw of the Westhill community. And we're asking for 153 to be permitted. The bylaw requirements, we're sort of setting it out in four different buckets here. The requirement as per the bylaw on the left of the screen is 207, and that's a requirement of one space per dwelling unit. What was approved previously was 144 spaces for the 168 dwelling units. And then we had all- dwelling units, and then we had also provided twenty-five visitor spaces, despite them not actually being required. But that was done in consultation with Transportation Services in order to essentially apply the bylaw five-six-nine-two-zero-thirteen rates, which were applicable at the time. Despite the fact that the site is not actually in the citywide bylaw, we effectively applied those rates to the site, and that was what Transportation Services had asked for. If we were to apply the current bylaw five-six-nine-two-zero-thirteen, the current citywide zoning bylaw requirement, the requirement would be zero parking spaces for residents, plus a requirement of twenty, of twelve visitor spaces. We, we're not proposing that. We're not asking for zero resident, like we are on other sites in the city. In this particular location, the entire team felt it was important to provide some parking, and we're actually increasing the amount of parking from the original application instead of one-hundred-and-forty-four resident spaces, up to one-hundred-and-fifty-three resident spaces. And then we're still looking to meet the visitor parking requirement in the parent bylaw. It worked to apply, providing the twelve visitor spaces. And then I'll also note, we are still providing the one commercial parking space, which is as per the original application. So a total number of parking spaces, if I, if I can do my math correctly, is one-hundred-and-fifty-three plus twelve plus one, so a total of one-hundred-and-sixty-six spaces are being proposed. But in terms of the parking, the variance being requested, because it's related to resident parking spaces only, the require, the request is to provide instead of two-hundred-and-seven, one-hundred-and-fifty-three. Hope that clarifies through the chair, but I'm happy to answer more questions.
Yes, that clarifies immensely. Thank you for that. Well done. I think at this point, do we have any more comments or questions? And if we don't, okay, we're going to head into committee now, sir. So give us a minute to discuss this. Oh, sorry. We're in committee. Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a problem with this application. It's been kicked around for over five years now. It's gone to the OLT. I think that I would be leaning toward approval. The condition that I would attach would be the one that's in the Transportation Services report, or I'm sorry, I can't find, hang on, I have it here. Hold on a second. The engineering report. So I'm comfortable because with that condition, you know, they can't get their final, final permits anyway, so I would be comfortable with an approval with that engineering condition that's in the report we got yesterday. And then also the planning condition.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. Would someone else like to speak to this? Go ahead, Mr. Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm leaning towards agreeing with my colleague, Ms. Omen. And of course, I would just note the conditions of engineering should be to their satisfaction. And subject to their satisfaction, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with approving, removing approval for this application.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. We good? I, I'm, I appreciate my colleague, Ms. McCauley's comments. It gave me a lot of depth to understand the history of this. But with it tied as a condition, I'm, I'm confident that we'll get over that line of scrutiny that's required to make sure that the concerns are met. So I'd be good with this. So without further ado, would somebody like to put forward a motion? Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would move approval with, to this, for this application, including the condition in the February eleventh engineering report that, that states the applicant is to provide a revised detailed sanitary capacity analysis with model, including the updated population count of the new development at forty-six-seventy-four Kingston Road, as well as the planning report.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Howe?
Through the chair, I move, I second this, the motion. And I would just add that the condition shall be subject to the satisfaction of, of engineering services.
Yeah, engineering and construction services, understood. So we're moved by Ms. Omen to approve with conditions as stated, I'm not gonna try to repeat that, for construction and engineering and construction, also seconded by Mr. Howe. All those in favor? And we have moved the motion dissenting was Mr. Khan and Ms. McCauley. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number twenty-nine. Folks, are you here to speak to it as speakers? Come on down. Just give us a minute. Item twenty-nine, one Hague Avenue. To construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a secondary suite in the basement, the existing frame shed will be demolished for variances. Do we have the agent or applicant available? We do? Okay.
Irfan Architect.
You broke up there. What is your full name and your address, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My name is Nadeem Irfan Architect, NIA Architects Inc., Ten Millan Business Court, Suite 710, Scarborough, Ontario, M1B 3C6.
Okay, and I just wanna, before we proceed, I wanna note the conditions of approval are noted by Urban Forestry. There's a letter of support, and there is, of course, the speakers here today. I don't see any objections. Committee, do we want a presentation, or do we have any questions? Okay. Well, I have a speaker. So we're gonna let, as, as agent, let me say that we don't have any need for a presentation. Do you wanna give one?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, we're gonna give the speaker a chance then to, to speak. If we have some questions, we'll come back to you. Please introduce yourself with your full name and your address, please.
My name's Brenda Woods, and I'm a representative of the owners of number three Hague Avenue, Matthew Woods and Sierra Miller. When Matthew and Sierra heard about the, this hearing today, they had a number of concerns, and they submitted a letter outlining their questions and concerns. Since the letter was posted to the site yesterday, they've had a discussion with the owner, Mr. Shaw, and also Mr. Irfan, who's here on the call today, and their concerns have been, their questions have been answered, and their concerns have been addressed.
That's very informative. We don't get that every day.
Well, it was, it was, it was extremely helpful, and I just wanted to make sure that that was reflected, that this letter didn't influence you, because those concerns have been addressed.
So if I understand you correctly, you're not opposed or objecting to this application?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we'll take that. Anybody have any questions? No. Okay, we're gonna go into committee now and make a decision. Oh, sorry. As the agent, I, I don't presume you have any rebuttal, sir?
Uh, no, sir. That's very comforting.
That's very wise of you. Okay, we're in committee now. Mr. Howe?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I move approval of this application. There are three variances before us, and on review, they appear minor appropriate and meets the four tests of, of the Planning Act. We also heard from this applicant's neighbor, three Hague Avenue, that they discussed, spoke, and concerns were resolved, so that's good to hear. So I move approval of this application.
Ms. Omen?
And there's a forestry condition, number three, mister?
My apologies. Subject to forestry condition number three.
With that, I would second the motion.
Okay, move for approval by Mr. Howe with forestry, urban forestry condition, and seconded by Ms. Omen. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Motion carried. Thank you. Have a good day. And item thirty. This is for thirty-six, thirty-six Cliffcrest Drive, Toronto, to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. Two variances before us. I have a speaker noted in our package and conditions of approval by Urban Forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online, and we did have a registered speaker at six High Cliff Crescent, who has informed us that they will no longer be participating.
Thank you, Deputy. Agent, can you please state your full name and your address?
Michael Cogan, forty St. Clair, East Suite 303, Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you, sir. I'm just gonna canvass the committee. Does anybody wish a presentation or have questions? Sir, we don't need a presentation, if you're good with that. We don't have any questions. We could take it right into committee. How do you feel about that?
Um, yeah.
Hold for a minute, Mr. Khan. Go ahead.
Sir, I have a motion.
Okay, we are now in committee. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, we have only two variations, uh, two variances, minor in nature, and I move this application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we have, oh, Ms. McCauley?
I will second that motion.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is urban forestry condition number one and number two.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
So moved by Mr. Khan with urban forestry conditions one and two, seconded by Mrs. McCauley. All in favor? And that's unanimous and moved. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. And now, without further ado, motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Through the chair, we are adjourned at five oh one PM. Thank you, everyone. Please turn off your cameras and mics.